At this point, we'll reconvene in the City of Manassia Common Council meeting. Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item on the agenda is ordinance 11, an ordinance amending the City of Manassia Comprehensive Plan. Is there a motion? This is the item that we had the public hearing on this evening. Not everyone at once, please. Oops, now I cut you off, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Plan Commission, I make a recommendation to approve ordinance 0-11-15, an ordinance amending City of Manassia Comprehensive Plan.
There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Is this referring to Racine Road down in Manassia?
This, item one and number, item two are related. It's the rezoning of the parcel that Myron is working on right now, near the curve. Is that what you're asking?
Okay, yes. Greg, how does this affect the adjacent properties? That zone likewise?
The parcel to the...
I don't think you're...
The parcel to the east is owned by Myron and is owned industrial. The parcel to the south, that was formerly where Bucklands were operating their tree service, that's owned industrial and is owned by Myron. This parcel is immediately north of what was operated as Buckland Tree Service. The Bucklands purchased that property a few years ago, and so it's that piece. So, the Plan Commission did consider the neighboring zoning and feels that this zoning classification is consistent with that neighborhood.
Do I see a building next door to this piece of property that's for lease or for sale, or I forgot what business was in there?
A GE apparatus or something was in there, but it's not been used as such for several years.
And that's in the town?
No, that's in the city.
And there was any concerns by that owner?
No, they were notifying.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Kyle, is there going to be any, I mean, out there I notice they put some fences up, but we have some pretty nice residential housing across the street from that, and what is the long-term plan for that?
That will be addressed as part of the rezoning, but a landscape plan was presented and has been approved by the Plan Commission, which will, in effect, establish a 25-foot landscape buffer between Racine Road and Myron's storage yard. There are some limitations of what can be done there with screening because of restrictions associated with the high voltage over at power lines.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item two is ordinance 12-15, and it's an ordinance amending Title 13, making certain changes to the district Racine Road. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for ordinance 0-12-15.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Would you have discussion, Kevin?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to, under Section 3 of the ordinance, I'd like to change the language for Section 3, and it should read that "This ordinance shall become effective upon recording a landscape plan and landscape maintenance plan with the Winnebago County Register of Deeds office."
Is that your main motion? Okay. Is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend at this point. Do we have any discussion on the amendment? Apparently, the clerk is going to ask you for the wording again after the meeting. So, seeing no other discussion, could, Dan, did you have discussion? Okay, we're going to take a roll call vote on just the amendment. So this is just on the amendment, Dan?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
So now we're looking at the ordinance as amended. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote on the ordinance as amended, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item number three is ordinance 13-15, and it's an ordinance relating to the annexation of certain properties to the City of Manassia, relating to QuickTrip ordinance. QuickTrip annexation. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make the motion to approve ordinance 0-13-15.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Again, there's multiple annexations here tonight. Is this in regards to Mr. Smith's property?
This is.
Okay. Mr. Smith has been a lifelong resident of the city. He owns a business, and, you know, he's asked us not to annex this. He has a beautiful home on Appleton Street, a new home he built on Appleton Street, and this was the rich and powerful, I wonder if we'd be making the same decision by splitting up their property. He is having some impact from the state on the front, and he has very successfully filled these parking lots some nights with events that he has there. I know that's not taking this property away from him, but it is making his property, I don't know what the town ordinances are, but I know in the city, if it's a non-conforming, you can't add on, you can't build on, there's some restrictions. So now we're kind of putting him in a situation here where I think it's very difficult for him to improve his property. If there is some large annexation coming, somebody wants to buy this and annex it to the city, let them. I did ask the attorney. If this fails, yes, we can rewrite it, and I think we should have the courtesy to Mr. Smith for this little piece of property here that's so important to his business, and he doesn't want to come into the city. I don't know what his other legal options are, that he needs to have an attorney represent him, or if he's going to fight this on an appeal or whatever, but Mr. Smith has been a good citizen, he's a good business owner, and I'm going to vote against this for this small piece of property that's really not going to make that big of a difference to our community, but will make a huge difference to his business, especially if he wants to add on. For instance, a couple of years ago, who would have thought that there was no smoking? Mr. Smith put a large smoking area on the back of his building, covered it all within the guidelines of the state. Now, who's to say what else is coming? And I think he has the right to expand his business if he wants to, and if it does put him in a non-conforming between two communities, that's very awkward. And I think if he was rich and powerful, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Greg, after you said that the lines are drawn and the village becomes a, or the town becomes a village, lines are drawn forever, can Mr. Smith ever decide that he wanted to come, bring, if it goes through, can he bring his property into the City of Manassia?
If it becomes part of another incorporated entity, there would need to be an annexation and detachment, so something would need to be worked out.
So he could do that if something would happen to the buyer, heaven forbid, a fire or something, car runs in, it does more damage than the, and the township wouldn't let him rebuild? He could come into the city and rebuild, and it's owned properly, that he could do that?
Yes, the property, we're bringing that parcel in as a commercial zoning, and bars are permitted in that district.
This is a real tough decision for me. I usually don't have a lot of mixed feelings between my votes and stuff, but this is a tough one. Thank you.
Alderman Lang?
So, question for the attorney, or the back of council. Thank you, Mayor. If this fails now, Solomon Taylor said this can be rewritten.
With regard to an annexation petition, if it fails, it could, they'd have to start the whole process over, and then it just, I guess you'd have to ask QuickTrip, because QuickTrip is the petitioner, I think there were more than one besides that, but the petitioners would have to initiate the petition again and go through the process, and so it would depend if they wanted to, but yes, that is what would happen if it failed.
And how long does it take to do this? Greg?
Well, we would have to go back to QuickTrip. They would have to re-sign the petition, we would have to publish the notice of intent, we have to send notice to the Department of Administration. They have 20 days to review the annexation, propose, review and comment on the proposed annexation. We have to then publish the annexation petition less than 10 nor more than 20 days after the notice of intent. So we're looking at, I'd say, 20 to 40 days, and believe me, this is going to have major negative impact on QuickTrip.
Thanks.
So approximately 25 years ago, we entered into an agreement with the town? 20, 25 years ago?
1998, I think it was.
And we agreed that the city would expand no further than 441, and if that was the case, that the town wouldn't contest the rest of that area coming into the city. That was the deal. As you can see, there's some property above, north of 441, which is really good property. We said forevermore, we will not go north of that area, and the reason was that they weren't going to contest down here. We need to be looking out for the good of our community. This could be a very high potential commercial corridor at some point, and if we give up that opportunity now, as Director Kyle said, it'll probably develop in the town or potentially in a new village, which means that all the rest of us are going to be paying more taxes because we're still going to be sending patrol cars in front of that, we're still going to be sending plows, we're still going to be doing all that stuff, but it's going to be paying taxes to that other community. So we really need to be looking out for the good of all of us and looking at that agreement that we had 20 years ago that said, yeah, this is the city and that's the town, and we're going to move forward. Alderman Taylor had some comments as well, it looks like.
It always seems like it gets to this body and then it's do or die. We just went through a huge development agreement across the street here, and it was the same thing, 11th and 3/4 hour, and got to do it or you can't. I'm not even going to ask when this started or when this showed up here at the city, but here we come again in 11th hour and make a decision on it. I have a respect for QuickTrip, I have respect for Mr. Smith, they're both business people. What if we were, Mr. Smith was impacting QuickTrip with something like this, how would they like it? QuickTrip's a fine Wisconsin company, they're, I think, listed in the top 10 of companies in the country or something, and I don't quite understand, Greg, how, did you set this up, or does QuickTrip tell you that they want to do this and then they set it up? I don't quite know the setup process on how the selection is done.
The parcels, we have several consenting property owners. The Manassia Joint School District, Bank of Little Shoot, and I can, parcel B is Manassia Joint School District, and there's some right-of-way in there. Parcel C is the Bank of Little Shoot. Parcel D is WPPI. Parcel E is QuickTrip. Parcel F is Winnebago County, and Parcel G are some private property owners. When, as I mentioned earlier, we assemble a drawing showing all the available properties in the City of Manassia's growth area, and then we do an assessment, we being staff, as far as which parcels have the best prospects for ensuring, you know, a good outcome for the City of Manassia with regard to development or redevelopment. QuickTrip is a petitioner, as are the Bank of Little Shoot, WPPI, and the school district. We create the notice of intent that shows these parcels, and they then are signatories to that agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Of course, Will Luff, no?
Yes, there is.
Oh, Dan, go for it. Oh, you came back just in time.
Greg, with the little house that's next door, during recess, I heard that it might be getting torn down. Do you know of anything about that? Is there any plans for that that we should be aware of?
I'm not aware of any specific plans for that property.
You want to put $5 million, buy me out, and you can do whatever you want with it. Instead of forcing me out of business. Somebody from the council's got to stand up and have some guts here, stick up for the small man. Not Mr. Greg here, that's taking up for the big businesses. Small people are the ones that make this world gold.
Is there any further discussion? If not?
I got a question. Thanks, Mayor. So, next time, Greg, was it Alderman Zalinski that mentioned about bringing this forward to us that we could look at it before we get to this, where you want to annex whatever?
You received that as part of the last Board of, or, excuse me, Administration Committee, that the notice of intent was in part of that packet, which showed the parcels that were proposed?
Right, but you mentioned that we have to do all or none. Is there, for next time, can we do, look at, do we have to do, say, five next time? You want to do all five? Can we look at individually first before all or nothing, or is that not how that works usually?
Well, I mean, it's, I'd be hesitant to put this out there as a multiple-choice kind of thing. It's, the annexation is a very complicated proceeding. When there are multiple parcels, there's a lot of issues to be considered, and I would be hesitant just to kind of, you know, give out a laundry list and say, well, here it is. Plus, we have to have the people who are signing the notice of intent be agreeable with what's being proposed. So again, and again, you know, this is a majority annexation. If we don't do this and we present another commercial parcel, we may end up with very similar objections from another party. So we're, unless you don't want to do these, we're in a position where there is going to be some disagreement about, you know, what's being proposed.
If you said every other property agreed, if you wouldn't have no problem with it, that would...
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Greg, I hope you can help me here. Is there any other instances where we have businesses that are in two different municipalities that are operating right now that you could help me with?
Yep, well, the old furniture store on Valley Road, that's one. We have other parcels. There was, I'm trying to think, I think there's something off of Appleton Road in the Drumcor vicinity.
Vanbus Corp Nursery.
Mm-hmm.
Was there any that were forced out of business because of this situation?
No.
Do you see any reasons that would cause a business to go out of business because of this situation?
Well, as I mentioned, there, you know, if there are problems with the expansion because the property is between two jurisdictions, there's nothing preventing him from annexing his other piece into the city, which would solve that problem.
Or the city doing it vice versa?
Well, the city...
Why are you forcing me?
Well, we can annex improved properties, but if we do annex improved properties, then we have to detach an improved property of similar value from the city's growth area. So we've tried to avoid doing that whenever possible.
And we've done that before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I think there's more than just a disagreement here. I think the impact is real on Mr. Smith's business, and if we're putting him in a position with a non-conforming lot in the town of Manassia, that's a severe impact to a business. And I don't think, again, the QuickTrip people would like to have their property split, and they're definitely an evolving business. Their model changes, it seems like it changes every six months, and Mr. Smith, his business model is changing too, and he has the right to adapt to that market and to add, to add on to his property as he sees fit. And this isn't just somebody saying, I don't want to be in the city. This is a very serious impact to become a non-conforming property. And I don't know what the town rules are, but I know in the city, a non-conforming property, you're very restricted on what you could do. I don't know if you know that any of their rules, Greg?
Well, again, we're not splitting this parcel. This parcel is a separate parcel, and as I mentioned, he would have the ability to annex his bar into the city, which would then, you know, deal with that, the expansion.
He didn't want to move into the city and pay much higher taxes on his business. He does have his home in the city, but his business is not. But would the town have, as we have, the non-conforming lot?
The, I can't claim to understand how the specifics of the town zoning, but the zoning relates to a specific parcel, okay? So he's got his bar operation and some parking on one parcel, and then he's using the adjoining parcel for parking. Whether that's conforming or non-conforming, I don't know.
Thing is, if I annex, I can put both properties together, and then I can build on to it. But if you take it away, I can't.
Alderman Taylor?
Attorney Captain, CF Legal recourse after this point, as of tonight. Can he appeal this to the Circuit Court?
If something is approved, and if he thought that he had legal grounds, with no legal grounds, no.
Seeing no other discussion, we'll take a roll call vote at this time.
Motion carried on roll call 6-2.
Item four is Resolution 18. It's a resolution relating to the annexation of territory proposed for incorporation, and we'll let the attorney talk about this one as well.
This relates to the other half of the memo that I put together relative to the petition for incorporation of the Town of Manassia, or part of the Town of Manassia as the Village of Fox Crossing. And you may recall that in regards to when the Village of Harrison proposed incorporation, the City of Manassia did adopt a resolution indicating a willingness to annex that territory that's proposed for incorporation. That is the, and I set forth the recommendations and the reasons for the recommendation to approve that resolution. It is not, and I want to emphasize, it does not mean that the City of Manassia would be annexing the west side of the Town of Manassia. It indicates that the City of Manassia has a willingness to annex that territory that's on the west side proposed for incorporation, and what would happen if it's approved and if it goes to the Circuit Court in the proceedings is that it would be forwarded on to the Incorporation Review Board. As I think, as I mentioned to you, I am informed that the City of Nina possibly would be adopting a similar ordinance, or excuse me, resolution, and I guess I will take questions if anyone has questions.
I think one other thing to note is that we do not have a, what would you call it, phrase, or a, there's nothing in our agreement with the Town of Manassia that we can't contest the incorporation of the town like there was in Harrison's case. If you want to expand on that, you can.
And in Harrison's case, there also was nothing in that boundary agreement, but they challenged a paragraph that was in there, and then we reached an agreement, the Common Council decided not to continue on with its challenge in that, in the Harrison matter. There is no similar language in the boundary agreement that we have with the City of, or Town of Manassia.
Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, thank you. This resolution, it says, whereas the City of Manassia has the capacity to serve the area proposed for incorporation of the Village of Fox Cross, what does that totally mean?
Sorry.
Yep, that's right. It means that the, obviously, some things would have to be put into place, but based on the experience and the abilities of the City of Manassia, we would be able to serve the west side of the Town of Manassia. I mean, it would take...
The east side?
This is the portion that's being proposed for incorporation, which is the west side.
Okay, that's on the other side of the...
Correct. It is. That's the portion that's the subject of the incorporation. Not tomorrow, no.
So we're saying that we have the management and the experience to do it, but of course, we would have to hire additional people in order to do that, but we'd also have additional tax base coming in to offset the additional people. Does that make sense?
Who did this study?
We have department heads that are very capable of running a public works department, a fire department, a police department, et cetera, health department. That's right, Nancy's very excited about this.
At what cost? You said the tax base would cover that. I have a hard time believing that.
True. We did look at all that, though. We did look at it on the east side more so than the west side, but we do have the technical capacity to do that, yes. This, and like Pam said, this is not saying we're going to annex. It says, we have the ability, and if you read the memo, it's mainly because the detrimental issues that will happen if the east side is incorporated into another community, leaving us with a patchwork, which costs us more to service that, both communities. And that's the bigger issue here. And that, that's the bigger issue here.
Well, I, this resolution is for the, I thought this was just, I see this map here. I thought this was just exclusively for the east side. Now, we're talking the west side and...
Once the west side incorporates, the east side will follow very quickly. As you saw what happened in Harrison, and if you've read their minutes, their plans are to do exactly what Harrison did. And to basically incorporate the west side and then swallow up everything that's left in the town on the east side.
If we would get this to, if this...
If it happened in three or four years from now, I don't... Did you want to comment on that?
The, you have to look at what does an incorporation do? Boundaries are fixed. That's it. Done. It totally closes off the city of Manasha. The boundary agreement that the city of Manasha has with the town of Manasha is due to expire in a very short time, if you ask me. In the law, things kind of run a little bit slow, just a few years.
Have we ever had any discussion with the town on this, to straighten out borders and make things work more efficiently for both, or? And who's doing this?
We've had several meetings, some with staff. I think, were there Aldermen involved in that one, or was it all just staff? That was, I'm getting the Harrison and the Manasha ones mixed up. There has been a, a willingness for the town of Manasha to give us the distressed areas of the town in exchange for the high-value areas of the city to even out the borders, which is a very bad deal for us. I have talked to them about merging the two communities together, and we gave them some ideas how much we could save if we consolidated services doing that. They were not interested in that either. And I think, as Pam said, it, this is permanent. Once they incorporate, that means the boundaries of Manasha are permanent where they are today, which...
Well, I would like to have that discussion of us all becoming one. It'd be best for all the citizens involved.
This may be a good way to...
If this would spur that discussion?
Spur that discussion.
But how do we take the politics out of that?
Your question, your answer is as good as mine.
Because, you know, along, looking down the road, that'd be the best thing to happen for this whole area.
I would agree.
And I hope somehow we can get that discussion out there, but is that basically what this is kind of spur this, this discussion?
It is. And if you'd like, I'll make a phone call to the town tomorrow, and you and I can go over there and talk to them about it.
Are they happy to see you?
Well, Dale was happy to see me yesterday and this morning. I don't know about tomorrow, but...
I think they listen to meetings after watching the parade. They get my point of view. They always say hi, so, okay, let's spur this conversation, let it go.
Okay. Alderman Taylor?
I hope we can bring the city of Appleton and the, the city of Neena involved with this, you know, petition for, for stopping this village. Certainly, a merger, I think we're at that stage. I think we're, the old blood from back in the sixties and seventies is pretty much gone, and I think there's new opportunities for both communities. We both share the, the same last name, if you will. And I think we would become, I looked it up, the 21st or the 18th largest city in the state of Wisconsin, probably making us an entitlement community. And along with that becomes some significant benefits. And I don't know if it's a tier system that we'd have to operate off of, but I'd certainly be happy to talk to the town with you.
Alderman Lingde?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Ochscher for down the road, because, yeah, as Mayor says, this will happen with the east side eventually. But I'm looking at, I got, I got a question. We, we have a contractor and a, to say, contract with Appleton. We go there, they come here for the fire department. Now, Midway Road south through the town of Manasha to the border of, of Manasha, if there's a fire right there, who responds to that?
Closest available engine.
So, it could be Manasha, city of...
It could, we will not respond to the town areas, but if it's in the city of Manasha or the city of Appleton, the closest available engine that's calculated through the CAD system will respond to that fire.
Right. But if the house is, which is right across the street, city of Manasha would not respond to that fire?
If it was in the township?
Yes.
It put me in a spot, because if we were actually a witness to a fire, we'd probably put the fire out only because of the, the safety involved. But to be dispatched to a fire from in-house or somewhere else in the community, we would not be dispatched to that fire unless we were called for a mutual aid...
Okay.
...from the township.
All right. So, with the police, where's the police station over in the town? Because it's on the other side of the lake, correct? And I know they, so, the same thing would be true, and I'm looking at down the road, that, Chief Steika, you just walked in, same question, same question for you, and I know they, I've seen their vehicles over on this side, you know? We're going from south of Midway Road, the town of Manasha there, and at the border of town of Manasha and Manasha, if there's this instance, town of Manasha goes to that call, not city of Manasha, correct? So, if we're right there, you would sit, we would sit and watch?
Depends on...
How does that work? How would that work?
How long do you have?
Because we're talking annexation, we can throw this at them.
A lot of different things come into play with that. It depends on the type of call you're talking about. If you're talking about something that's in the roadway, we actually have something by state statute, which is called joint jurisdictional authority. So, we're able to enforce all ordinances and traffic laws anywhere along the width of the highway or roadway. So, if it's a traffic crash, and technically, the pieces in, where the crash took place was in the town, but we have a portion of that roadway, we could right that traffic crash. If it was something like a barking dog call, obviously, we would defer to the town of Manasha if we determined that it was occurring in their jurisdiction. But if it was something similar to what the fire chief had discussed, that someone was getting beat up, we would obviously intervene and then turn it over to the town of Manasha. And then, we also have the mutual aid agreement, which is similar with the chief had talked about as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Dan?
One, one more question. I decided my, to change my mind on this. Greg, how long does the average person stay in their residence? I know we always talk about the transient people and apartments, but I read somewhere in here that the average person stays about 10 years in their principal home, and then they move on and...
Yeah. I've heard numbers of more like seven, but...
Seven, okay. I heard somewhere between five and 10. But that's what's happening. Most people don't even put down roots. There's probably only, I don't know, three or four of us that were lifelong residents here, that are sitting here.
There's quite a few.
Okay. I don't, I don't know the history of everybody here, but I was here all my life, and that's what changed my mind on this, because most people don't really put down roots in their whole generation. We're, well, we must be a rare council here.
Well, for a while, we had quite a few Appleton people on the council.
Well, we got one Neena.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
I confess.
I confess. Yeah, that's good.
See?
Okay.
My son is blue.
Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote on this?
We didn't have a motion, also.
Do we not have a motion?
No, Pam, I'm sorry.
Well, we're going to start over then. Do we have a motion? Could we have a motion first then? And then, we're going to revote. Debbie, if you could clear that.
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Zaleski?
So, I'll make a motion, we just pass this under the council?
This is at the council, so...
Oh, it is? Oh, yeah, we're right...
We're going back and forth.
After all, the things that went down, excuse me. I'll make a motion to pass the resolution R. 1815.
There's a motion, a second. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Okay. Item L is appointments, and we have a resignation and an appointment. We could handle them together if you so wish. Fran Eben is here this evening, waiting patiently, watching. Do we have a motion at this point? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Ron Duck from the police commission.
Do you wish to do them together or separately? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? A motion carries?
He said no, he asked to come back.
That could be true. So, at this point, we would need a motion to appoint Fran Eben to the police commission. Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Francis S. Eben, age 21, Kinsley Brook Court, Manasha, to the police commission for the term of 6115 through 5117.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Fran. And Debbie can swear you in either after the meeting tonight or sometime in the future. Welcome aboard. Item M is held over council business. We have the common council minutes from 5:415. I don't know if there, there was no motion at that point, so if we could have a motion to approve, and then we'll also get the motion to amend. Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes of May 4, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, and would you like to move to amend them as well?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to amend the minutes of May 5, or, May 4, 2015, as stated to the clerk.
Do you want me to state that? Yes.
Sure, just...
There was an admission on Kathy Bauer, and I don't know what her address is or something, and in regards to the development project downtown. She spoke in the public forum, and it was a, was it, present?
Okay. So, there's a motion to amend the minutes to reflect Kathy Bauer speaking during the public forum? And is there...
I don't have a second.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? And now, we have the motion to approve as amended on the floor. Is there any discussion on approving the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Item O is public comments on any matter that was on the agenda this evening. If there's anyone from the gallery who would like to speak at this point, you're welcome to do so.
I would just like to thank a couple of council members that ran the thing for themselves instead of somebody in the back pocket. I really discuss it in the Manasha, like, but I'll move on to city of Manasha in a minute. I'm getting this QuickTrip here with Greg in his back pocket. I feel sorry for you people, but you're not government, you're not for the people, you're for yourselves. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.